I didn't do anything, my man.
I turned it off and turned it on.
I had to turn off and turn back on.
And then it worked. Just disconnect and then reconnect right away.
What?
Yeah. It's getting weird so I can see what I'm doing here. So you shut off and shut your device off?
Just the Wi-Fi.
They shut it off through the.
Conference today. Conference today.
Are you on City Hall or are you on City?
Oh, no, we said that tomorrow.
As we go. A little bit. You know, since. We call the City of Kiwanee County Council Meeting for Monday, August eleventh, twenty twenty five to order. Let the record show all the members are present. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ways be seen. All right, item four, this meeting is in compliance with open meeting laws. Item five, motion to approve or make changes to the order of the agenda. Do I have a motion? To approve or any corrections? The motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item six, motion to adopt the meeting minutes.
I'll make that motion.
These are for the July fourteenth, twenty twenty five. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item seven, consideration of bills, claims, and conference attendance. Item A, general bills and credit card payments. Do we have a motion to approve those?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Please call a roll.
In court?
Aye.
Laha?
Yes.
Brewster?
Aye.
House?
Yes.
Oftedal?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Ah, aye.
Motion carried. Seven B, financial reports. I would entertain a motion to approve and place on file the financial reports. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Of course, we'll call, I'm sorry. Please call a roll.
In court?
Aye.
Laha?
Yep.
Brewster?
Aye.
House?
Yes.
Oftedal?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Ah, aye.
Motion carried. Are there any conferences? Conferences, any claims? Claims? Item eight, public comment. Three-minute time limit per person. If anyone wishes to speak under public comment, please come forward, state your name and your address. So anyone that wishes to speak under public comment? Is there anyone to wish to speak under public comment? Hearing none, public comment is closed. Item nine, boards, commissions, committee reports, and staff reports. I would entertain a motion to accept and place on file those staff reports. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Committee board commission reports. Do we have a motion to accept and place those on file?
Accept.
Third second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item ten, mayor's report. Tonight, I just want to bring the attention to the reevaluation of the City of Kiwanee. The assessor has gone around and made a reassessment to taxes, and there should be letters going out at this time detailing the process. The valuations will be higher than what you previously were assessed at. This does not directly indicate that you're going to have a higher tax bill as the mill rate will be adjusted as well. But in some cases, it will go up. And if you're concerned about your valuation, your assessment, you should contact the Assessor Accurate Appraisal. Their phone number is nine two zero seven four nine eight zero nine eight. All that information is listed on the city website. I know it is will be included as well in the letters that are being sent out with more detailed information on the process. There is also accurateassessor.com is their website. And there will be a border of review meeting. If you meet with the assessor or speak to the assessor over the phone, and you are not satisfied with the answer that you're getting from the assessor, you then have the opportunity to come to the border review. That will be held at City Hall on the twenty fourth of September at four P M. Prior to that, there are open book dates. All those dates are listed on the city's website as well. I think they're listed on the letter also. But yeah, your first call, if you have any questions or concerns on your reevaluation, should be to the assessor, so. That's all I have under mayor's report. Item eleven, old businesses. Any old business? No business? We'll move on to item twelve, new business. Twelve A, resolution two zero two five dash two zero five eight, adopting the two zero two five dash two zero two nine comprehensive outdoor recreation plan.
Yeah, the project was finished, started almost a year ago, following to update the existing corp, which expired last year, was included as part of the integrated plan. Project was led through to completion with the assistance of Cedar Corp. Eric Fow with Cedar Corp is here to provide an update.
Eric? Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, counselors, for some time. I'll keep things pretty brief. As mentioned, this replaces the previous document. In order to remain eligible for D and R stewardship funding in particular, you need a current plan with that five-year window. This version, I would argue, was much more in-depth and extensive regarding not only the process, but probably the results from your last plan. And we did that intentionally, a lot of public participation. I think listening is the first thing that you do on any of these kinds of projects and getting to know the community and their needs. And so we had an ad hoc committee assigned, included all the persons, Scott Oftedal. They met about six times. I certainly thank them for their work. Quite a group, very engaged, very willing to talk, discuss ideas, and actually formulate decisions too in terms of what was in the plan. We did two public informational meetings, one near the beginning, one near the end, as well as an online user survey that was responded to quite well through the late winter. The document contains all the standard chapters, detailed inventory of facilities. This includes acknowledgement of the campground, marina, and the Kiwanee landing boat launch, as we note later in the document. Those are budgeted for separately and kind of through a separate process by the city, so they're connected to this plan, remain eligible for D and R stewardship funding. But we did not go through a lot of work and effort on those particular sites. There's a lot of recommendations that are in the harbor master plan that was updated recently for those facilities. We took a look at population and demographics, obviously not a lot of needle moving there in terms of recent past or projections. But nonetheless, comparing your facilities for recreation with the standards, you're in pretty good shape. You technically have a surplus of acres, mainly due to the existence of the Marshland Walk and the kind of facility that is. Specific facilities, the only glaring shortage was lack of basketball courts. And we know just from needs in the survey that there's a high demand for pickleball courts. There's no standard to measure that to, at least that I'm aware of at this point. But that's a fairly common need in many communities now. The goals, strategies, and recommendations in there were pretty well built from scratch, much of it based on what we heard through the public participation, through discussions with the ad hoc group. There are general recommendations, there are park-specific recommendations, and we talked a little bit about new parks. And while the growth doesn't warrant it at this time, it at least kind of sketches out some areas for consideration. If new development, new subdivisions start going in in the future, you'll want to take a look at some of those areas to try and reserve some space for a neighborhood park. This culminates at the end into a five-year action plan. I think it's table thirteen in the document. This is a plan, not a budget, as much as it looks like a budget. We worked very closely with Heath and with Nate in the committee to work through that. Try and make sure it's somewhat reflective of the dollars that are allocated currently with some assumptions of perhaps some small increases on items over time, and then put estimates to the needs that are out there. You'll notice that pretty much close to every year shows a deficit. You don't have enough money to do everything that's needed or desired. And again, this is a plan. There's ways to accommodate those things, maybe look at other funding sources. But in particular, if you're going to submit a grant to D N R, the last thing you want is your action plan to show that you're fully funded, and you have cash in the bank, and you can do these things for yourself, which is not the case. So this was reviewed by the Plan Commission. We had actually some good lively discussion at that meeting, a few minor edits resulted. But I believe they approved it unanimously for the council's consideration. And once approved, we will assist the city in sending a copy to the D N R for their records, as well as providing some final printed and digital copies. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
You don't have any questions? Apparently, the report and the explanation was outstanding.
It's the best.
Right, hearing no questions.
Very good. Appreciate it. Something comes up down the road, feel free to reach out, but it was a pleasure working with the city and everybody on this project.
Appreciate it. Great effort. Thank you.
You.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve resolution two zero two five dash two zero two eight, adopting the two zero two five dash two zero two nine comprehensive outdoor recreation plan.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Your second?
One second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Well, B, presentation of the twenty twenty five housing study, part one for K C E D C by redevelopment resources.
Yeah, as K C E D C is engaged in developing housing program, Kiwanee County modeled on the program, Sheboygan County. Program, Project Homestead, includes financial assistance from the D N C to assist with establishing a framework project, as well as parameters of the county's current need. First part of the financial assistance resulted in the production of a housing study, which is part one. Outlines the basics of the county and locality's issues with housing, the nature, extent of the need, and some preliminary recommendations changed. I included a study, the copy of the study electronically, and Ben Nelson with K C E D C is here to lead off the discussion.
Welcome, Ben.
Thank you for having me. I'll be very brief. Just wanted to give a little bit of history on how we got to this project. So about two years ago, we had, I believe it was seventeen of our largest area employers throughout the county, as well as some of our local municipal leaders, as well as representatives from the county and the county board. All get together. We've identified through hundreds, about a hundred and sixty B R E visits over the course of that, the first two years that I was in this position, that talent was our number one challenge for our local businesses, attracting it and retaining it. Part of the struggle was there wasn't much housing stock available at that time, so they wanted us to put some serious effort behind figuring out how to tackle that issue. So from that point, the K C E D C board, which Heath is the City of Kiwanee's representative on that board, decided we went through a strategic planning process and developed a new strategic, strategic plan. The result of that was our top issue was housing, a part of that effort. So we applied for and received a grant through the state of Wisconsin to the Wisconsin E D C. So it's the Thrive Rural Program. We are one of ten communities across the state that were awarded this grant. That grant gave us the additional capacity to hire Kristen to do some of the initial work. And as Heath has already kind of indicated, what the intent of our project is, is to really get a good grasp on what does our housing situation look like? What is the solution? What kind of housing types could we potentially bring to the community? Which communities need what type of housing? How many houses? All of those questions that were being asked so many times over. So when we applied for the grant, we are specifically evaluating the communities of Kiwanee, Algoma, and Luxembourg. We picked those three just because they're the largest in our community, and we had to keep the population total under ten thousand. So even combining all three of our largest communities, we stayed under that ten thousand threshold. So we secured the grant, and Kristen was the consultant that we hired to do the initial part of phase one. And I will turn it over to her if there's no questions for me. Yes.
You said you modeled it after the Sheboygan County. What successes did this have for Sheboygan County? So what sort of things did they put in action that actually all thousand issues?
Sure. So Sheboygan's, so we're looking at it, we're trying to replicate what they are doing, but from a rural perspective. So what Sheboygan is doing, and actually Kristen is a consultant that worked on Sheboygan's program, so she can probably fill in some of the gaps that I don't have. But what they are doing is, is their economic development organization, basically, they were having the same issue. They put themselves more or less in the position of they're the developer, and they're going out in their community and identifying a site, working with a construction company to do the actual construction of homes, and then selling those homes as a workforce attraction type of effort. To do that, they've put in a bunch of restrictive covenants on their housing. So, for example, it can't be owned by an L L C or an outside corporation. Somebody that lives in the house has to provide proof of employment in Sheboygan County. There's a certain percentage of homes that have to be filled by somebody who doesn't currently reside in the county. So, and then they're also using that to build an economic development fund to fund future development projects. So it's very attractive, obviously, to us because housing is a challenge. Obviously, finding money to do different economic projects in a rural community is also a challenge. So the potential for generating some kind of financial revenue stream to help support future development was attractive. We don't have that information pinned down yet. That will come on the back half of phase two, but that we're, we're down that path.
So this would be, are you looking at probably any and all, but would you specifically be looking at anything, public and private coordination, money funded?
Yes, actually, part of that original contingent group of business leaders across the county is, is there is interest in private funding support behind it. But there was just so many unknowns at the beginning of it, like, well, how much money do we need to put in this? How much does, how many houses are we talking about building? What, what community is going to get this? What piece of land? Which one has the infrastructure? Do we need to go to T I F to try and develop these types of things? So that's some of the work that we're doing with Kristen is answering all of those hard questions about what is it actually going to take? Because up until this point, everything was hypothetical and kind of hearsay. And while this worked over here and that worked over here, and Kiwanee is kind of a unique situation in terms of the county, just given that we're not going to get much development from the east, so we, we're limited in which direction some of that kind of stuff can come, so.
Are you familiar with how Sturgeon Bay has put their model together? Because they're doing workforce development housing there, I think both apartments and homes. I, I mean, I know that that's going on. I'm not familiar with how they're pulling that together. Are you familiar at all?
Loosely. The last time that I've had any in-depth conversation there has probably been six months.
Okay.
But I, I am aware of that they're doing it, but they're doing it from a little bit different perspective than what we're trying to do.
Any other questions for Ben at the moment? All right, Kristen?
Good evening. I'm Kristen Fish Peterson with Redevelopment Resources. And we completed phase one of this project, which was a market analysis on Kiwanee County's housing landscape. So I do have a PowerPoint presentation that I'll ask, thank you, if you could run the slides for me, that would be wonderful. And I'll just, I'll go through this, this presentation and answer questions about the study. I think you all have a copy of it in front of you. But what we wanted to do is provide leaders, yourselves, as well as county leaders and other communities, with information about how housing impacts economic development and what external factors impact housing development. We also wanted to inventory the housing supply, look at functions of market demand, and create a demand forecast, do a gap analysis, create funding strategies, look at policies. And then what is the impact on participating communities? So what we did was we gathered secondary data and on the demographics and the housing supply. I have a very talented person on my team. We affectionately call the data geek, and she loves that. She loves making the charts and graphs and digging into the data. Then we conducted stakeholder interviews. I personally spoke with many people in the county based on a list that was, was put together by Ben, including many board members, and, and I did speak with Heath. Analyzing existing conditions, we conducted a gap analysis and a demand forecast, and then we created some early recommendations, but know that there is a phase two to this project. Okay? We, we wanted to make sure that everyone is aware that there are housing impacts on the community, and then there are also impacts on housing. And we created a graphic for that. Housing impacts everything. Housing impacts the quality of life, workforce retention and recruitment. It, it impacts the construction, real estate, retail, and service industries. It impacts property tax revenue and business retention and expansion and recruitment. It also impacts infrastructure and land use deficiency. But what impacts the housing market are land costs and availability, physical development constraints, labor costs and availability, financial resources, public approval process, and the cost of materials. And we've seen how those impacts ripple through all the housing industry. We've done housing studies for communities across the Midwest, many in Wisconsin, but in other states as well, and it's been really interesting. Next slide, please. So our study area was the county. We specifically focused on the city of Algoma, the city of Kiwanee, and the village of Luxembourg, and we used Okanto County as a comparable area. Your population trend is flat, as Eric pointed out in his presentation just moments ago. And your, what, what we see, though, is always really interesting that household trends and projections change more than the actual population changes. And I always think that's really interesting. How can there be fewer or more households when the population doesn't change? But we're looking at kids moving out of their parents' homes. We're looking at divorces. We're looking at spouses passing away. Things like that impact the number of households and the household size. Population trends by community here. We listed what's going on in each of the three communities. And if you, I can go through this as slowly or as quickly as you want. I'm going to choose not to spend a ton of time on this, if that's okay with everyone. We also have the, the household trends and projections by community. You can just kind of see where your, your community splits out compared to your neighbors. This is employment by occupation, and we've compared it to Okanto County, and then we've done employment by occupation by community. Looks like professional and production and services are the top occupations in the county. And that, I don't think that surprises anyone. That's just helpful to us to understand the type of housing that's needed. Household income is shown here. Again, we compared to the county, and that's just, just for a measure of comparison. And then by community, we also compared incomes. This one is always, this chart is always really interesting to me. So this is the age of the housing supply. And when you look at the housing supply in just about every community that we've ever done housing study, and it looks like your, your county, where most of the housing stock is developed before nineteen thirty-nine. And then we have a fairly consistent production until two thousand nine. And it, it, it goes, it decreases dramatically with the recession that happened in two thousand nine and the housing bubble there. And then from two thousand nine, two thousand ten and forward, we had just a serious lack of production of housing. That's one of the things contributing to the demand today that we see. They can see.
Why do you think that's happening?
Well, first of all, when, in two thousand nine, when the recession hit, we lost a lot of contractors. And, and they just, they just went out of business. They didn't come back. We also, the banking industry changed, but the housing wasn't produced. And if you saw, if we go back one slide, and you see that consistency across decades from the fifties, sixties, seventies, and eighties, you're in that, you know, ten percent roughly of your housing stock was built each year, and then all of a sudden, nothing. Lots got more expensive, and then materials got more expensive, and you don't have the contractors to build it, and it just, everything just kind of seized up. So it's, that's creating the demand now. People, people are looking for housing, and the stock just isn't available. The other thing I want to share is that seniors are not leaving their homes anymore. They're staying in them longer. Back a decade or two ago, people would look for their final landing pad in their sixties and seventies. Now they're staying in their same house in their eighties, into their eighties and beyond, and that isn't freeing up that naturally occurring affordable housing for, for people that might need a first-time home type situation. Here we have the vacancy by county, and then the vacancy by community. And I do want to say, we did some research into why the city of Algoma and Kiwanee Counties, or the city of Kiwanee's vacancy was a bit higher than the village of Luxembourg, and a bit higher than we normally see in communities, and those were attributed to short-term rentals. The, the census or this data source, as we looks at short-term rentals, if they're not being occupied full-time, they look at them as vacant. So that's why that is, it's almost like a false vacancy rate. Everybody understands that, okay?
Home store is.
Yeah. So. Maybe did talk to a local, a local Realtor, Carrie Steck, from Berkshire Hathaway in, at Bay Area Realty. And we got this local data about sales. And so you see the sales chart numbers for home sales and then days on market. We're doing a housing study for Fitchburg, right down in Madison, right now, and their days on market is between five and ten. But here, they stay on the market a little longer, but still fifty to sixty days or so, as low as under forty days or around forty days back in twenty twenty-two. It's picking up a little bit, but and, and sales can easily be a function of the amount of inventory that's on the market, so that sales chart is, is just, just reflects the inventory too. So the median home value is shown here by community. The median home value in Kiwanee is one hundred and fifty-four, eight fifteen. And then the median list price by year is shown, and you can just see how that price has steadily climbed over the last six years, seven years. Just, you know, I, I wouldn't say that there's that many more expensive houses being listed. I think it's just what the, the price of, of the existing stock is doing. It's crazy. And then rent, we talk about median rent in twenty twenty-three was just under eight hundred and fifty dollars a month. And I, you know, it, that's, that number could be somewhat misleading. I'm personally developing a property in Pleasantville, Iowa, right now, and that community's median rent is five hundred dollars a month because the housing stock is so old. There is no new product in that community, so it's, it's less expensive. It's just, you know, so eight hundred and fifty dollars a month is an average or a median rent. That could be because there might not be as much newer product to have a higher rental price. So the demand forecast, then, this is kind of where it gets fun for us. We, we look at people that are employed in the area but living outside the area. There are two thousand people, two thousand and ninety-nine people that are employed in the county but live outside the county. So we look at those as potential homeowners. We don't count them one for one in, in the total job, the total housing demand, but we think some of them might want to live here. So we do count a, a portion of those. We also look at new jobs, and over the next five years, there is potentially one hundred to two hundred and fifty new jobs coming to the area, potentially. We talked to employers and specifically asked them, so we have some, some clue on that. Then we look at new households captured, natural households. Then we look at new households captured, natural household growth and pent-up demand. That pent-up demand number is, is that number that when we looked at the age of the housing stock, that's what we call pent-up demand. The fact that we didn't keep up with that about ten percent growth on a decade, decade by decade basis. So, and then a recommended vacancy rate. For the city, it looks like between, in, over the next eight years or so. You could handle two hundred and forty-five to four hundred and nineteen new residential units. That could be absorbed in your market, that's the demand forecast we're looking at. And so for the whole county, it would be between twenty-one hundred and thirty-two hundred total housing units. We further split that out on the next slide, between the rental market and owner-occupied market. And I, I think senior housing is important, so I included that in market rate housing. Because we think the seniors that you have would want to live in a place that is a market rate place, you don't, you're, I, from my interviews, I didn't believe that a majority of your seniors would be looking for affordable housing, although there are a number that would be, I put them on the market side. The workforce column is affordable slash workforce or somewhat less expensive housing. And so we broke it up between studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom and three-bedroom. And then on the left side is the rental demand and the right side it would be owner-occupied demand. So, to get to a total of about two hundred and forty-nine, that's how this one shook out. Then we made some recommendations for phase one and these are high-level recommendations. We want to make sure that the general public as well as elected officials are educated on the market. They're educated on the situation with employers and everything beyond, you know, in, that I didn't talk about, that's in the housing study. The way affordable housing impacts communities, the way short-term households impact communities and all of that. So educating folks on the housing market is one of the recommendations that we have. And we can create social media campaigns for that. In fact, I think my Dana, my data geek already did create some of those social media posts where we can put some fun facts out there about the housing market just to educate residents. We also want to educate about missing middle housing. And missing middle housing is everything, does everybody, does anybody know what missing middle housing is? We might have talked about it in the report, but it's everything between a single-family home and a single-family lot, on a, like a, a regular lot. Everything between that and a high-density multifamily development. So, it's not those two things, but it's everything in between, in the middle. It's duplexes, triplexes, quads, condos, townhomes and then cottage court or pocket neighborhoods. We want to make sure people are aware that that is a way to solve the housing crisis without using a ton of land. And to, to hopefully and conceivably provide a less expensive product. Another recommendation is to provide some financial resources to support housing development in each community, so you understand opportunities available. And how that can work, whether you have extended your TIF districts for affordable housing or whether there are other opportunities. But we want to educate about financing and helping support housing development. So that's under the education category. Second recommendation on the next slide includes actually constructing new units. And and this recommendation breaks down, you know, finding, finding, finding where lots are located. And making sure your approval and permitting processes are friendly to that missing middle or to developers that do want to build new housing units. Many times in communities zoning, the zoning code is gonna trip you up when it comes to, you know, creating smaller lots or, you know, setbacks, different setbacks and things like that. And then, also marketing materials to promote the development of new housing units throughout the county should be created and utilized by KCEDC and shared with municipalities so they can send them out to their preferred networks. I guess the first recommendation on that one was to host a housing summit and invite contractors and developers from the region and take them around. And I said as far away as Wausau because I know there's a developer that has developed things between Door County and Wausau. And they, they wanna, they want to build more in this area because it makes efficiencies for them. So, could be inviting a bunch of developers, taking them around in a bus. We've done this successfully in other communities and once they get to know a community, they get to know the, the sites and the opportunities and the way that elected officials like to work with, you know, deals, it's, it's helpful to them, so. Their recommendation is all about rehabbing existing units, I'm a big fan of, of redevelopment, that's why our company is called Redevelopment Resources. There, there might be housing stock that's, you know, if, if, if there are seniors on fixed incomes and they're not able to invest in their home, their homes might be coming dilapidated and then that housing stock is gonna be in worse shape when they do finally move out of it. So, making sure the existing housing stock is in good shape is very important. See, I think that's where, if you don't have a homeowner rehab program, we've been able to create those programs in communities. Is that the last slide, Heath? Oh, we got one more, okay. Oh, and then address the short-term rentals, I would ask to spend a little bit of time on this and, you know, there's the state statutes are pretty loose on short-term rentals, so if you wanted to create some restrictions locally, you could. But it, you know, there are ways to, to deal with that, whether you have a registry for short-term rentals, you're definitely one, gonna want to be collecting room tax from them. And and just a recommendation to kind of spend a little time on that.
Yeah, short-term rentals is definitely an issue statewide and we've had meetings on that in the area. And the state actually has pinned the communities down quite a bit, there's, there's not a lot that we can do, I mean, between Green Bay, Door County, Kiwanee County that we're in this meeting, there, there's not a lot that we have in our toolbox, so to speak, to prevent it. I mean, if you're in an R1, you can, there's, there's no cap on how many you can do.
You can do whatever, you can do.
Do whatever you want, the city can't stop you, hardly, you know, there's certain restrictions, like you say. And, you know, we were all encouraged to do what we can. But tha- that's taking, that's taking a lot of surplus off the table.
Exactly.
And that's probably the biggest thing that all our communities are facing.
Yeah, and you're in this, you're in this unique place where if a, a family is, has a decent retirement but they can't afford or they don't want to try to afford Door County, they're, they're gonna want to stop here and have all the benefits of being on the water and in a small community that gives all that charm, you have a lovely downtown and.
Gibraltar has twelve hundred units, or something crazy number like that. It, it was like, they double the size of their community just with these units that they have for short-term rentals. So, it's not unique to anyone in the state, it's just beginning to get a light shined on it.
Sure. Yeah, I did write the policy for the city of Whitewater's TIF, XS TIF program. And they were incentivizing new construction for owner-occupied units that they had to be occupied by the owner. And they, if they turned it into a landlord tenant or a rental situation within ten years, then they had to pay an extra fine and pay the incentive back. So, there are some things.
Our tools, yeah.
Yeah, there are tools, you just have to have an appetite for that and, and so, that's, that's gonna all part, you know, come together a little more focused on phase two when we get into that. So I think that's it. Oh, more, here we go, it's only for missing middle. When was the last time the zoning code was updated here in Kiwanee? Okay, so.
Soldering a little bit, but not a lot.
Well, we worked with the community, I think it was nineteen eighty-four when theirs was last updated. But anyway, it's, it's, it's important to look at that and I did help this, the village of Mount Bora recently actually write code that would be friendly to that cottage court development where you have a small piece of land, it could be an acre, half-acre. And you can put six or eight or twelve small units on it, they face each other, so there's a common green space in the middle and they have a sense of community. And these are small homes, nine hundred square feet maybe, two-bedroom, one-bath, maybe no basement, maybe a basement. But, you know, perfect for somebody who's an empty nester or a single mom with a couple of kids or whatever. And then you have that sense of community out in that open courtyard and so, but the zoning code right now in most communities doesn't accommodate that. So, it's creating zoning for missing middle housing. Making sure you focus on form, scale and type, making sure zero lot line is okay. You know, you're not having a huge minimum lot size and minimum building size and all that stuff, so. There we go, so identifying available development opportunities and that will be part of phase two, I believe. But looking at your, your inventory, seeing where you have not only existing available vacant land but infill sites, infill opportunities. Maybe there's a vacant lot in the middle of a neighborhood, how do we encourage a developer to fill the home on that lot? Creating the map and then even consider land banking, if there are homes or lots like that that are privately owned and they're just not ever gonna get turned over, if maybe the city could buy it or figure out a way to facilitate a sale to a developer. But there are, there are opportunities for inventorying everything that you have and then making that available for yourselves and also Ben to market to developers.
So I think you brought some good points, one of which if we were to invite regional developers and, you know, show them county-wide what we have here to develop, I think, you know, that's definitely a proactive approach. When we did have that meeting, Ben, I don't remember when that meeting was with the leadership of the county and the business leaders and whatnot, was that a year ago?
I think that was in the summer of twenty eighteen.
Okay, so, one of the takeaways from that meeting, I think, was return on investment. And, you know, the target group, like you said, if we're looking at that middle-type housing units and it would be multifamily. And when you looked at the average rent, your return on investment, at least at that time, they were just thinking it was not gonna happen. You just can't charge enough rent to come out ahead on it, so the developers are building west of us where obviously it's developing far faster rate than anything over on the lake shore by us. So that's a, that's a hurdle that we need to look at, either, like I mentioned earlier, private, public joint effort. Obviously, there's grant opportunity on the government side of things that we may be able to help facilitate, but I don't know what other communities have done. I mean, not everybody faces the same struggles that we do, being a three-sided community and small rural. We have challenges that other communities don't, so.
That's somewhat of a tourist economy and.
Sure, and that's why, you know, when you have capitalism running the way it's supposed to, that's why all of these Airbnbs and such are coming about because they're able to make a lot of profit.
Yes, exactly. I just spent the entire last weekend in a real estate investment course, three days of learning how to do that. I don't plan on coming here and buying houses to lease for Airbnbs. I do like larger buildings, I redeveloped an old hospital in Iowa into apartment units and I'm working on an elementary school now personally. But just because we see the demand and we see the need and then there are these old buildings that are just gorgeous that would otherwise get torn down. Anyway, those opportunities are out there and it's just a matter of proactively marketing them for your community, to the right people. So, this is phase one, we had to kind of get, we had to get the lay of the land and understand the market really well before we move into phase two. So, yes.
Did you identify any specific roadblocks that we're facing, why we don't have development?
This, I, if they aren't listed in the report, you know, based on in the interviews that I did, I did ask questions of people. And I did ask, you know, what are the challenges? And I would have to get my notes out on that and be able to answer that question better. But I did ask challenges for everybody I I interviewed, I said, what are some of the challenges to development? Some of it is available, lack of available land, some of it's lack of money to install infrastructure or things like that, others. There were differences in the appetite in different communities for housing, whether, you know, some, one community might not be interested in multifamily. One might be interested only in, in anything but affordable housing, you know, that kind of thing. Did hear some of that.
Well, and I can add into that, I mean, part of what we were trying to achieve with this study too is, we didn't have this data in place that there actually is demand in our county, because it more, prior to this, it was all speculative of, well, we could use more housing, but how do we really know and what kind of housing do we need? And so, some of what we're breaking down here is demonstrating that there is demand for it. I'd say one of the other big hurdles that we've had is, you know, we're an agricultural county. So, any large tracts of land typically are in ag, so asking a farmer to give up tillable acres or things like that for housing sometimes doesn't get received so well.
Definitely heard that, we don't want to, we know that's, they're not making any more land and we don't want to give up ag land, farmland for housing, heard that a lot.
And we, we're a rural county with small towns where, I, I think, probably across the board, we heard we don't want to lose the small-town feel. We don't want to lose the charm of what we have, we don't want to, we don't want to attract riffraff or those types of things. So, you know, those are some of the, I think, the questions that we had in the beginning that hopefully now, now that we actually have a plan that's out there and a study that's current, post-COVID, we're one of few communities that have that. So we're demonstrating that the, the demand is there and then with phase two, we'll get into more of those specifics and identifying here's where all of our opportunities are, here's, you know, the lowest-hanging fruit and here's one that has potential but it's gonna need a little bit more investment. And so, the hope is, is obviously tackling the low-hanging fruit out of the gate and maybe working towards some of those ones that may need a little bit more development or resources behind it. But it's also taking a very strategic approach to this, where we're looking collectively at the county and our three largest communities as well. So it's not just, well, Algoma's doing their thing and Kiwanee's doing their own thing and it's all disjointed. It's at least more strategic and streamlined and collaborative because we have all of these communities at the same table.
Any other questions? Questions, well, thank you very much for the report, I think that was very thorough and that's a great first step, so, look forward to continuing.
I want to compliment you on running an efficient meeting.
All right. Now, come on, Joe. There you go. All right, then we will move on to item twelve C, ordinance six-five-eight-dash-two-zero-two-five, chapter fifty-eight, solid waste revisions.
Yeah, we're requesting this in part because of trying to make sure that we can pay for our garbage collection and make sure we have a consistent standard. We had, for a long time, operated on the notion that every unit that exists, every existing, not vacant lots, but every existing unit would pay a share of garbage collection fee, bi-monthly. Finance committee is over, discussed this prior to the meeting, but essentially what it comes down to is our current user fee charges for collection services. But the ordinance right now is a little vague on what happens if somebody says, well, I don't want to pay that fee. We're trying to ensure is that everybody's paying the fee so that we don't have people asking to not pay the fee and then staff not knowing what to do with it. We've operated on the idea that, that everybody should be paying the fee, so that's the way the ordinance is structured. I will say that there are amendments that have been done through the Public Works Committee that are included in the most recent draft that you got this morning, Aaron distributed. So that you can look at that as the current model for what we're doing. One thing that we have to do after this is publish the ordinance in the newspaper for publishing purposes, so whatever the effective date would be is the date of publication. Now, we'll get up to questions and/or adoption.
Any questions?
So, if we adopt this, do you know approximately how many people have, were, you know, by mistake were opted out of paying? That they'll have to be contacted and let them know that they're gonna resume payments?
Theoretically shouldn't beat anybody that was killed. Just because somebody said they weren't supposed to doesn't mean that's not gonna happen. And if there were, staff will be a lot, but on a case-by-case basis, there weren't very many of them. The one that did come up was one of the property owners who owns multiple properties in the area, I won't say his name.
Or her, is it her name?
Is it her name, yes, but you, you probably know what I'm talking about.
Any other questions concerning the ordinance? We adopt the ordinance six-five-eight-dash-two-zero-two-five as verified by the Public Works Committee. We have a motion, is there a second? We have a discussion. Please go, roll.
E Court.
Aye.
Yes.
Brewster.
Aye.
House?
Yes.
Off to them.
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
I'm motion carried.
Item twelve D, Water Department Roof Replacement Proposal Approval.
Uh, yeah, Public Works Committee reviewed this. This is for replacing, for essentially replacing the existing roof with a steel uh, sheet roof over the top of the existing shingles. Uh, we had two proposals in, one from SMP Construction seventeen-six-eight-seven and then Kick Bush, custom construction for thirty thousand five hundred. The kick bush construction included gutters, but the Public Works Committee reviewed last Thursday and recommended uh, approval of the SMP Construction uh, proposals.
Any questions? Nathan, anything you wanna add?
Both in budget, those approvals like to.
Having all those in budgets.
Okay. Uh, if there are none, I would entertain a motion to approve the SMP construction for seventeen thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars for the roof replacement project at the Water Department.
I'm all. I'll second.
Any discussion? Please call roll.
G Court?
Aye.
Uh-huh.
Aye.
Brewer?
Aye.
Okay, House?
Yes.
Off to them?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Uh, aye.
Motion carried. Twelve E, Wisconsin Department of Transportation, WISDOT, agreement for state state let? What's that?
Uh, State Highway twenty.
State Highway Project for State Highway twenty-nine.
Yeah, city's been approached by WISDOT regarding a proposed project to mill and repave a stretch of State Trunk Highway twenty-nine, which would be from the West City Limits up to Dodge Street, which is a stretch of one point four eight miles. Project currently includes minimum cartway widths, uh, lanes, twelve feet each direction, plus some urban driveway access repairs. Uh, the request for now is for the city's contribution of engineering costs in the amount of sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Total cost, the actual construction would be roughly two-thirds WISDOT, one-third city. Uh, this is a repeat, I included it in the packet because we found this from two thousand and one uh, where we essentially paid for a third of the construction. Um, as proposed by WISDOT, when they came to us, they would actually pay for the part that's in the middle and we would be essentially paying for the parking lanes and whatever else is gonna be included. If we wanted to add some other things, then we would talk to them about what we wanted to include, but right now it's basically just, basically from the curb to the curb.
No infrastructure.
And no, nothing under this, under the street. We have no intention of doing anything under the street, so it's just straight mill repave.
The only thing that might get reviewed would be any stormwater improvements, whether they'd like to go away from the rural bitching to more curb gutter, storm, you know, underground piping. Um, like the gentleman at Symphony, um, per whole conversation, this is merely the agreement, really just to speculate that here's your portion of the design cost, the participating, non-participating portions of it will be more or less uh, work out as we go forward. Like Ethan mentioned, they're looking at twelve feet each way to the driving lane, so five, five point five to seven point something, keep it apart later. It's city's responsibility right now for a mill repave. And the numbers that were brought to you before were for the full reconstruction, so I'm glad you guys were around. Yeah, that was when everything, we all, everything else went.
Any other questions?
Just to clarify the actual construction, we're talking about twenty thirty-three, twenty thirty-four?
Twenty thirty-three is our, said there's our target date.
Thirty, was it thirty-two and thirty-three?
Yeah, they said thirty-two to thirty.
Thirty-two and thirty.
On the assumptions to be fair. We have some time now planned for this once we get further along. Given the monetary commitment, I wanna make sure everybody was on the hook.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, then I would entertain a motion to authorize staff to sign the state municipal finance agreement for State Highway Project for State Highway twenty-nine from County Highway C, the city limits, to Dodge Street in the initial amount of sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Please call roll.
G Court?
Aye.
Uh-huh.
Yep.
Brewster?
Aye.
House?
Yes.
Off to them?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Uh, aye.
Motion carried. Thirteen, agenda items for next meeting. Uh, fourteen, next meeting date, September eighth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, I don't think we need to schedule anything beyond that. Item fifteen, motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five-one C, considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Police cart, police department expansion. Do I have a motion?
I'm all.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Please call roll.
G Court?
Aye.
Uh-huh.
Yes.
Brewster?
Aye.
House?
Yes.
Off to them?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Tom?
Cut.
Motion carried. We are in closed session. We need to use the restroom or anything, I guess, take a quick minute and.